Come on. Okay, have we started yet?
Nope.
Oh, good.
We're waiting on you.
We're waiting on you.
Here.
Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 6th, 2021. Item B, approve a revision to the job description for aquatics and fitness center coordinator to aquatics coordinator in the parks and recreation department and assign it to pay grade 112 of the salary table approved by city council on June 20th, 2016. This position was approved in the City of Moore fiscal year 2022 budget and staff request an effective date of January 1st, 2022. Item C, approve a revision to the job description for fitness manager to fitness coordinator in the park and recreation department and assign it to pay grade 110 of the salary table approved by the city council on June 20th, 2016. The pay, the position was approved in the City of Moore fiscal year 2022 annual budget and the staff request an effective date of January 1st, 2022. Item D, approve a revision to the seasonal job description for aquatics manager to aquatic supervisor in the parks and recreation department and assign it to pay grade 105 of the salary table provided by the city council on June 20th, 2016. This position was approved by the City of Moore fiscal year 2022 annual budget and the staff request an effective date of January 1st, 2022. Item E, approve a revision to the part-time job description for childcare coordinator to childcare specialist in the park and recreation department and assign it to pay grade 102 of the salary table approved by city council on June 20th, 2016. This position was approved by the City of Moore fiscal year 2022 annual budget and the staff request an effective date of January 1st, 2022. Item F is approve a revision to the part-time job description for childcare specialist to childcare attendant in the parks and recreation department and assign it to pay grade 101 of the salary table approved by the city council on June 20th, 2016. This position was approved in the City of Moore fiscal year 2022 annual budget and staff request an effective date of January 1st, 2022. Item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of $2,709,544.24.
Make a motion that we approve the consent.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider acceptance of the Cities of Moore annual, excuse me, acceptance of the City of Moore's financial audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021.
Mayor and council, we have Bob Dillon with Dillon and Associates here to present his summary of the audit and to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Betty. Mayor Lewis and council, we recently completed our annual audit of the City of Moore and there's a second audit report that deals with the federal expenditures, federal award notices. We issued an unmodified opinion on the city audit as a whole, which indicates that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated without any material misstatements. On the compliance and internal control reports, we did have one finding that dealt with, that dealt with a bank account that had a balance in excess of the FDIC limits. The state statutes for Oklahoma require that the city either receive pledged assets or keep their accounts under the FDIC limit. The bank corrected this problem on its own during the first two weeks of July, so they have a monitoring process, they just were a little bit behind the curves. So, our recommendation was the city and the bank modify their monitoring process so that we make sure that we comply with this requirement to keep our bank accounts underneath the pledged assets. And the city and the bank have both been working on this and I think that they've resolved this matter. We didn't have any findings related to the audit on the federal awards this year. On the federal awards, your total expenditures was about $6 million. Of that, the CARES Act was about $4.7 million. We also completed the estimate of needs and calculated the millage requirement for your property tax. The millage came in at 15.42 per 1,000 of assessed value. This was a very minor decrease from last year, so it's been fairly constant for the last few years. Just a couple of highlights I'd like to hit on the audit and then I'll be happy to take any questions. Your sales and use tax was actually up this last year by about 15%, or about $5.7 million. The total sales and use tax was about $43 million for the year. You had a healthy carryover in your general fund at the end of June, which are funds that are being carried over for this current budget year that you're in. The carryover was about $13 million, which is about 27% of your annual revenues. That's fairly healthy. That is, your, your general fund was actually up about $5 million for the year. So, we had increases both in the general fund and the Moore Public Works Authority. The Public Works Authority, their net position increased by about $4.7 million to a total of about $28 million. The city's long-term debt increased by about $21 million due to a bond issue and I think there was also a note issue if I remember right. Your total obligations, not counting pension and, and risk management obligations is about $127 million. Related to this, we, we do a calculation on your loan covenants to make sure that your net revenue available for these annual payments on the loans is in compliance with the loan covenants. The required coverage is 1.25x, so your revenue has to be more than 1.25x your debt service. Your actual coverage was 4.37, which indicates fairly healthy coverage ratio. Any questions from council?
Appreciate the job you do.
Thank you very much. Thank the staff, they've always been very helpful with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve or to accept this?
Make a motion, we accept the financial audit.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item number, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a revocable permit for various structures encroaching on utility easements located in the Grace Point addition.
Mayor and council, this item stems from several, probably more than several carports that have been constructed in the Grace Point addition, which is the senior housing complex, over the years. This first came to our attention several years ago when they first started being constructed without permits. During that time, we did have a conversation with the developer and it was determined that these carports added to the quality of life for that addition to get the cars out from the weather and elements. So, we decided that in, in exchange for a revocable permit, we would allow these structures to continue to be constructed. So, this addition is nearing the end of its development, so we're now asking for the revocable permit to be approved.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of application for stop-loss insurance with Ironshore Indemnity Incorporated to be administered by Assured Benefits Administrators Incorporated, effective date January 1st, 2022 through January 1st, 2023.
Mayor and council, for many years, the city has used US Fire as our health insurance stop-loss carrier, but over the last few years, our premiums have been increasing. With the change to United Healthcare as our network, which you approved at your last meeting, we had an opportunity to look at some new options for that stop-loss coverage. One of those options was Dallas Risk Management, Ironshore, administered through Assured Benefits Administrators, our current TPA. I do have Daniel Summers from Gallagher here to provide additional information. If you have any specific questions, otherwise staff recommends your approval.
So, this is a savings by going with this?
It's an adjust, it's an adjustment. Everything's going up, this is less going up.
Less going up, right, okay. I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider declaring 20 radar units and 40 in-camera, excuse me, in-car camera systems that are no longer serviceable as surplus and authorization for the destruction or donation of said items.
Mayor and council, this is kind of a fall cleaning, if you will. We're doing inventory check and just going through some older equipment that we have had surplused in our own state for some time. It's been in our garage area. So, cleaning that out and kind of updating our overall inventory for the police department. These items were recommended to be surplused and/or donated to another agency that could make better use of them. The 40 cameras are all 15 years old and just, there's really nothing that can be done with them other than just to be disposed of. The radar systems are in various states of disrepair, but if somebody wanted to take components from this one or that one and put them together, they might be able to get a working radar that they would have to get calibrated. We've scavenged what we could to use for our own purposes continuing forward, but inevitably, this is just equipment that's extended its life.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And chief, for the record, are, all of our radar units work perfectly.
Yes, sir.
Would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of an agreement with the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma using Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 funds.
Mayor and council, last year on December 7th, 2020, an allocation of $100,000 of CDBG COVID funding was allocated to the Regional Food Bank for the Food and Resource Center here in Moore. Originally, these funds were allocated for an additional cooler freezer for the center. Once they moved forward with the project and started to get quotes, they realized that it was going to be way over budget, so they have shifted their focus to reconstructing their parking lot. Currently, it has a lot of drainage issues and it's just in a, in really bad shape. A lot of elderly people utilize the Food and Resource Center, so it's hard for them to get into the door safely. So, they have asked if they could reallocate these funds to reconstruction of their parking lot.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please, if there's no other discussion?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number eight is consider approval of a contract addendum for the disposition and development agreement with the Curve Apartments LP and NHS Moore Curve LLC.
Mayor and council, the Curve Apartments has requested an extension for construction. The construction completion date in the last addendum was December 31st, 2021 for all buildings, parkland, and other public improvements. This addendum will extend the construction completion dates for Building B to January 31st of 2022, Building C to February 28th, 2022, Building A to April 30th, 2022, and all parkland and other improvements to July 31st, 2022. Supply chain disruptions, limited product availability, fluctuations in material pricing, front-end labor shortage, back-end employee turnover, and city inspection issues are reasons for delay. There continues to be material shortage due to production delays. Production delays continue due to labor shortage. There's also been a significant labor shortage for onsite contractors as well. For Building B, the final inspection for mechanical, plumbing, and electrical have passed as of today, with fire and sprinkler having a partial final inspection. Final inspection for the, for the overall building was performed today but did not pass. The building official anticipates completing another final building and fire inspection tomorrow. He's confident a certificate of occupancy will be issued by Wednesday. There's not much left to complete for Building C and the building official anticipates a certificate of occupancy. This extension is within the CDBG DR expenditure deadline and staff recommends approval.
So, right now, they're running ahead of schedule on those buildings, B and C, so we have pretty good confidence in the schedule. What is the CBDG guideline?
We have with, since COVID, we actually have till September of 2023. Originally, it was September 2022, so either way, we're good.
And I'm obviously going to vote to approve this, but I don't believe all of this is because of supply chain issues. A lot of it is because of the contractors, just for the record. So, I make a motion to approve.
A second.
And six project managers probably way in here somewheres.
Do what?
And six project managers way in here somewhere, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item number, item carries. Item number nine, we've asked, been asked to table this. This actually goes on the MPWA and will be back on the next meeting. Randy, do I need to read this off or just table it?
Yeah, if somebody could make a motion.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we table. Second. Item one.
All right, thank you. And do you want, do you want to second that?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to table. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is discuss, considering if deemed appropriate, determine that Sergeant Jeremy Lewis of the Moore Public, or excuse me, it should say, Moore Police Department acted in good faith and within the course of his employment and appoint Blaine Nice to represent him in Shakar versus Lewis, case number CIV-21-1151 pursuant to Oklahoma statutes 23-101 and 23-2102, excuse me.
Mayor and council, this is a litigation brought by Mr. Malik Shakur. Mr. Shakur first started out by suing a host of people, plus the City of Moore, the City of Moore Police Department, and Sergeant Lewis. That action was dismissed. The court gave him an opportunity to amend his complaint to try and find something. That was amended, that was dismissed also. He then brought this third action here against Sergeant Lewis. All the allegations are the same, nothing's changed. It primarily stems from a guardianship issue where Mr. Shakur was arrested. Those charges were subsequently dismissed by Cleveland County District Attorney because there wasn't a real basis to continue with those. I think Sergeant Lewis's main involvement was he answered questions during a news interview. So, there's, there's nothing to this, but we need you to approve representation for him.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. Just for the record, Sergeant Lewis and I are not related, even though I wouldn't mind if we were. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item, excuse me, item carries. Item number 11 is consider ordinance number 998-21, amending Part 10, Chapter 4, Article B, Section 10-414 of the Moore Municipal Code by establishing a new specific prohibition for operating or permitting to be operated in device designed for sound production, amplification, or reproduction, including but not limited to any radio, musical instrument, phonograph equipment, electrical audio equipment, tape recorder, loudspeaker, and other similar device at any city-owned park that exceeds 65 decibels measured at the boundary of any city-owned park, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Yes, mayor and council, I'm sure the council is aware of, and if you're not, we, the city receives complaints from residents that live around Buck Thomas Park mostly for use of the audio equipment during the youth sports activities. And before this change was in place, it was kind of a subjective type situation on being able to hear the music, hear the announcements inside, inside one of the residences that surround the park. Brooks decided or asked me to amend this ordinance by placing a 65-decibel limit. And I went and asked him, how much is 65? I had no idea. But he did indicate that equipment that can be purchased, equipment that can be used to measure this at a 65-decibel level, that is what might or could be heard inside of a residence. So, if it's less than that 65, it wouldn't be a violation.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
And council and I went out and listened to it, stood at the back of the park and kind of felt like that was a fair number.
They had a meter, a meter that could measure the sound from that and it seemed very reasonable.
At the edge of the park, is that correct? Okay, so.
Any, any of the boundaries, any of the boundaries of the park.
At the edge of the park. So, it's much louder, it's louder than 65, because when I Google that, because I have no idea what that sounds like. A vacuum cleaner is 70 decibels, but it's at the edge of the boundary of the park.
Yes.
Yep, so all the way out in the outfield type thing, yep.
I have a question. On Saturdays, every, every Saturday at noon, we blow the storm sirens and that's going to be way more than 65 decibels. Are we going to exempt storm sirens?
I believe there is exemptions in there that are already in the ordinances. This would just change it for Buck Thomas Park and the sporting events.
You know the emails and phone calls we get and you know that the first thing they're going to do after Saturday is come up here and want charges filed against the city.
And let, and let's be fair, it's, it's the soft, it's softball. That's, it's not everybody that uses the park, so.
You get those complaints as much as I do, about 125.
Say that again, sorry?
Sirens to about 125 decibels. Right.
Great.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is consider ordinance number 997-21, amending Part 10, Chapter 4, Article B, Section 10-4154 by amending the definition of organized sporting events providing for severability inviting, providing for repealer.
Mayor and council, this amendment is necessary to be able to enforce what you just passed. In the original noise ordinance, there was a complete exception for what could be known as an organized sporting event. So, in order to be able to enforce a 65-decibel reading, we had to change the definition of organized sporting event.
Motion to approve? Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
And just, just a note, Mayor Lewis, on page 150 of your agenda, it lists the exceptions.
Okay, thanks.
We'll look at that later.
All right, I will, thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 14 is the consent docket.
Did we, we skipped 13?
Oh, sorry, I skipped one. All right, sorry about that. Item 13 is consider authorizing the purchase of Cisco Duo software services and hardware tokens for Microsoft Office 365 multi-factor authentication from the Chickasaw Telecom in the amount of $30,214.50 using Oklahoma State Contract Number SW11, or excuse me, 1006C. Sorry about that.
Mayor and council, this is for, as it says, multi-factor authentication for our Office 365 email, which we have in the cloud. It is being done at the highly recommended of our cyber insurance. It is so highly recommended that they have said, since we don't have this active, that our premiums are going up this year until we can get that fixed. So, you'll see later on that Brian will be coming up here and, and that the premiums are going up on the cyber insurance. He can answer more of the cyber insurance side of it, but this is to correct that problem. This is obvious, this is something that's been coming on the pipe for about six months and we didn't find out about it affecting the cyber insurance until about a month ago. So, we've been trying to scramble and find a way to fix this.
So, would this be an annual licensing fee?
About $20,000 of that would be the annual license and the other $10,000 is the hardware tokens.
Okay.
Well, I don't know anything about that, so I appreciate you guys taking care of it. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 14 is a receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December 6th, 2021. Item B is ratify action of the city council regarding application for stop-loss insurance with Ironshore Indemnity Incorporated to be administered by Assured with Ironshore Indemnity Incorporated to be administered by Assured Benefits Administrators, Inc. effective January first, two thousand twenty-two through January first, two thousand twenty-three. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two in the amount of nine hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, seventy-six cents.
Most approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the uh consent docket?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fifteen is consider approval of a lease agreement with Waterman Group LLC for the use of a water well located in Cleveland Heights.
Chairman and trustees, uh, this agreement would last fifteen years. It would have a, an additional, uh, a, a single option to renew for an additional ten years under the same terms of this agreement, or of the first fifteen years. Um, the, the city would uh ha- has agreed to a minimum volume of three million gallons uh per each month for this agreement, and uh that's uh with our distribution system and the way this is tied in, that would not be a problem for us to be able to use that. Um, if uh, or in addition, the city assumes all obligations and responsibilities for uh operations and maintenance, as if this was our pump at the station or well station. Um, should be noted that um any maintenance or repairs that we do or capital investments, we would be reimbursed for those uh as part of the agreement. Uh, if approved, uh, this would start in uh, uh, or, or this would, our first payments would be beginning uh at about two dollars uh per thousand gallons, which is ninety percent of what we already pay uh for Oklahoma City. I believe it's about two dollars and twenty-two cents per thousand. So we're, we receive, this agreement allows a ten percent savings from everything that we buy from this, and we would, we would recommend that we approve the agreement.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Thanks. Bill Waterman was a uh, an important council member here for a long time and a very valuable one, and I appreciate the work that they did on this, and uh, can't say enough about the guy. So anyway, with uh that being said, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is consider approval of a property and contents insurance policy through O-MAG and excess property and contents policy through Homeland Insurance and Corporate Company, and excess flood policy through Voyager Indemnity Insurance Company, and physical damage coverage uh for the city sanitation trucks, mobile command unit, and fire trucks through the Great American with a total premium for all policies in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars with Russell Hollingsworth of Dillingham Group Insurance's agent.
Uh, Chairman and Trustees, uh, this is a renewal of our property insurance policy. We have roughly a hundred and seventy-one million dollars worth of property that we insure. Um, this renewal uh consists of our main property uh and contents policy through O-MAG, uh, which covers the first hundred million uh dollars worth of property. We then have an excess property and contents policy through Homeland uh insurance for the remaining seventy million dollars of property. We also have an excess flood policy through Voyager Indemnity, and we also have physical damage coverage for sanitation trucks, our mobile command unit, and beginning this year, uh, our fire trucks through Great American Insurance. Um, our premium is four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, which is an increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars from last year. Uh, but twenty-two thousand of that increase is because we're going to be adding the fire trucks. And you might ask, well, how do we insure the fire trucks now? Currently, we have our fire trucks insured through the Fire Department Insurance Program, which is through the state. That policy right now is about twenty-five thousand dollars. We can get better coverage, and it's less expensive if we combine it with our sanitation trucks and our uh mobile command unit. Um, so what our plan is, is that if we do in fact renew and add the fire trucks, we will cancel the insurance through FDIP. I will get a refund. I'm expecting around fifteen thousand dollars or so as a rebate from what we paid uh in our renewal for the fire trucks. Um, we'll also be receiving a rebate of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars from O-MAG because uh we did not have any claims through property insurance in twenty-twenty, and we're also eligible for another rebate next year because we didn't have any claims this year either. Um, so if we do everything correctly here on this, uh, we can cancel the fire trucks uh with the FDIP and actually save some money on this.
Yeah, great job.
Great job.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Stane.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seventeen is consider approval of a cyber insurance policy through underwriters of Lloyds with a total premium of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars with Russell Hollingsworth of Dillingham Insurance as the agent.
Uh, Chairman and Trustees, this is a renewal of our cyber insurance policy. Uh, there's been some major changes um in the cyber insurance market since the last time uh we renewed this, uh, this policy. Uh, our agent contacted, I believe, eight or nine companies, and all eight declined to cover us at all uh because we did not have a multi-factor authentication process in place. Um, and the only pol, the only company that would even insure us would be if the company that we currently have is a renewal, but the premium would go from thirty-five thousand to fifty-three thousand. Uh, so what we are planning on doing is renewing at the high fifty-three thousand, get our tokens going and, and get uh the multi-factor authentication as quickly as we po, as we can. Our goal is to get that around March or April is what I'm being told. At that point in time, we will then cancel our insurance premium at fifty-three thousand, ask our agent to go ahead and get quotes again from the other eight companies, and we are expecting to get a policy probably around twenty-five to thirty thousand is what we are expecting. Um, and I'll come back and I'll be able to uh explain our choices then at that point, but it looks like March or April is when we'll be able to get that in place.
So that will give us multi-factor authentication on what pieces of our network?
It's my understanding it's the email on Hubider, so we have, we have multi-factor on the domain?
The, the, what they are, what they, the cyber insurance says that we need to have that on is that we need to have that on our email, our Office Three-Sixty-Five email. They also say that we need to have it on the various other pieces of our domain, which we do have it on. The part that we don't have it on is our, is our Office Three-Sixty-Five email.
Do we use a VPN of any kind?
Yes, and we do have multi-factor authentication on that.
Okay, all right.
So that, yes, the only piece that we don't currently have it on is the, is the uh, um, our email in the cloud. Um, and that's what they're saying that we, and that's what the whole of this is.
Thank you.
I don't enough to know, I don't know.
What was said there?
It's like, it's like they're speaking another language.
It's all good.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Would you call for the vote, please, if there's no other discussion?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Stane.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number eighteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held December the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars, sixty-three cents.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket?
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for that vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
This is normally Adam. Oh, is this me?
Yeah, I think so.
Sorry.
I was going to say, that's, that's you or Adam, I can't remember.
Roll call, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham?
Here. Item twenty would be the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Most approve.
Second.
Add a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, the consent docket's been approved. Now we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members that were present are still present. Item uh twenty-one is new business citizen forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Anybody? The manager's gone, so any employees want to speak? I'm kidding, okay.
And we, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to make a funny thing to.
Oh. Item B would be.
Now it's really kind of.
Any trustees?
I was just going to say, we got a new city manager, but you already did a little joke.
Oh, sorry.
Just ruined it. My, I've been looking all meeting, all, for the whole meeting for that.
Oh, man. Okay, sorry.
Never mind.
Any, any items, any council members or trustees?
I have a question for Sue. What's with the um alligator head floating in the, does it keep the geese away?
Yes.
In Central Park, there's an alligator head.
Affairs about that. Let them know there's an alligator head plastic to keep the geese away. That was a trial.
Uh-huh.
If that doesn't work, are we bringing in a gator?
It, it's working. It absolutely is working. Well, that was the question.
You'll notice all the ducks are on the other side of the bridge.
So, so we, we commented on Sunday, we were walking, we stood there and we looked, and we're like, but why would it be on this side and not this side? And why are there? And so I said I was going to ask, so that's interesting.
I had a public affairs contest on names, so we didn't talk about it.
Well, at first we thought maybe it was like some, like a joke somebody threw to end, but then we were like, no, it's anchored down, like it's.
Just get a real, get a real gator. Could be.
Yeah, I think we're going to make it box too.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
The new equipment looks really good at the station. Looks good.
Yeah. All right, any items for the city manager, trust manager?
Uh, other than we'd just like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, and Brooks promised me he wouldn't throw me to the gators, but I guess that's not true, so.
Well, okay, well, Merry Christmas, you guys.
Randy, we should call the uh Gator Randy, Randy.
All right, item twenty-two is adjourned.
Some of them.
Oh, yeah.
All right, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we adjourned.
Are they having one in a full network tonight?
Uh, they are.